Good afternoon and welcome to our work session of Tuesday, January 12, 2021. With that, there are a couple of things I'd like to comment on before we actually start the meeting, and I call roll. One is, I want to read that today, earlier today, it was brought to the attention of the governing board that the notice for today's work session had been entered into the system, but was not published on the district website with 24-hour notice of the meeting taking place. It was properly posted, however, on the bulletin board outside of the governing boardroom within the 24-hour required time period. So in an abundance of caution, the typical remedy for such a technical error would be to cancel and reschedule the meeting after proper online notification could be made. But there are other considerations in the statute that would allow us to continue the meeting, so we decided to continue the meeting tonight for the following reasons. One, all others, well, generally, all other statutory public notice requirements regarding this evening's meeting were met. First, the notice was posted on the bulletin board, the other place where notice of governing board meetings are to be published. Second, the published meeting agenda properly identified tonight as a work session for informational purposes only. Third, the information on how to connect to the board meeting, including the dial-in information and access code, was properly published. And fourth, as is consistent with a work session, the board will not discuss, deliberate, or take any action on matters pertaining to the governing of the Maricopa County Community District. We will retain a copy of this statement and maintain it with all board documents. To those four items that I listed that allowed us to move forward, we did have general counsel review of this and understand we are in compliance with the open meeting laws to move forward. So wanted to dispel any concerns in that regard. And certainly, due to a technical glitch and error this occurred, and we'll go forward to double-check those in the future. Wanted to make that note. Secondly, there's been some inquiry as to why we have had so many meetings in January of the board. And as stated in my statement, this is not a meeting, this is a work session, but there are two elements to this. One is for new and continuing board members, there's two aspects. One is board orientation, the other is board development. By going through the meetings that we've scheduled in January, we are seeking to enhance our professional development as board members as we move into significant year of activity and wanting to ensure that we're in compliance and also understanding our responsibilities. Not to say we don't generally, but this enhances our knowledge and appreciation of those things. I expect that maybe each forthcoming month will not be quite as full, but we have a lot of work to do this year, and this will set the stage for that. So thank you for your understanding and your participation with us in these meetings. Moving forward then, I'm going to call roll for the sake of public record with board members, and also want to know Dr. Gonzalez is present with us. But with that, I'm going to start. And Mrs. McGrath, are you present?
Yes, present.
Dr. Norene?
Present.
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Present.
Dr. Thor?
Here.
Ms. Win?
Present.
Is Ms. Bitter Smith on?
That might be her.
Okay, well, at this point, I don't show present. Ms. Smith, excuse me, Ms. Munoz, our student advisory member, are you present?
I'm present.
Great. So with that, not that it's mandatory that board members attend work sessions, but it appears that six of the board members are present, including, and we have the presence of our student trustee. With that, Dr. Norene, do you have a song to identify our work session?
Well, I was just going through a list, and the best I could do is "Joy to the World." From the '70s, of course.
Yes, we'll take "Joy to the World." This seems an important one to these days.
Or by "Three Dog Night," or, you know.
Okay, the one by "Three Dog Night." Is that what you're saying?
I'm stretching now, so.
Okay, well, next time, someone else can also come up with a song, not to say you haven't done a good job.
I welcome that, yes.
Okay. So that's just in keeping with our tradition of work sessions, calling to mind the song to put us in a jovial mood or mood for greater learning. So with that, I'm going to move us into the agenda, and today, we're identified to discuss accreditation, shared governance, and academic freedom. Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any comment to start us off in that area?
Yes, President Sullivan, board members, members of CEC, and any guests that are with us this afternoon, as you stated, the topic today is accreditation, shared governance, and academic freedom in the form of training for our newly elected board and our board members that have been with us. And so, we appreciate this opportunity to provide this continued professional development for our board. I think it helps us to have a similar understanding and to be on the same page, so that when we reference these items, we have a common understanding, common definition. And this would be a great opportunity to learn more about these three topics, and of course, an opportunity to engage in conversation and ask any questions. And we hope that we can answer any questions that you may have. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Provost Carla Fisher, who will lead us in this discussion, and I will turn it over to her, and she will also be introducing other members of our team that will assist in the presentation this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor Gonzalez. Ms. Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of CEC and guests, thank you for having us today to talk to you about some very important topics related to our HLC accreditation and the functioning of our district. Today with me presenting are Stephanie Hopple, District Director of Compliance Reporting and Accreditation Support, and two of our esteemed members of faculty, Matt Jolly, who is English at Gateway Community College, and Eddie Jenna, Philosophy Faculty at Phoenix College. We have two additional panelists with us, though they won't be speaking, they will be available for questions. That's Bettina Sullis, our Interim Associate Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs, and Matt Ashcraft, Associate Vice Chancellor, Strategy, Research, and Effectiveness. Next page. So for our work session today, we wanted to talk to you about the purpose, the importance, and your role as a board member in these topics. Accreditation, which of course, for us, is the Higher Learning Commission, shared governance, and how we work with our faculty and staff to move our institution forward, and academic freedom, and what that means in terms of our world today, especially when we think about social media and other ways that we communicate. So exactly what is academic freedom, and how does that play into the work that you do as a board member? Next slide. So first, we're going to start with accreditation, next. And so, we wanted just to talk for a moment about why does accreditation even exist? Well, the fact is, there aren't any federal regulations of higher education in terms of our academic quality and our standards. Certainly, we are highly regulated in other ways, but when it comes to the actual quality of what we produce, the federal government doesn't take a look at that. Now, we do have state expectations. We have the Arizona Commission for Post-Secondary Education, but as you can see here, their mission is really to increase financial aid. It's to implement and identify and implement strategies to help students and families make that transition to post-secondary education, and to provide a forum for all sectors of post-secondary education to work together. So that would be, of course, our technical institutions, our community colleges, and our universities. But nowhere in that mission is there the regulation of our academic quality at any of those levels. And so, independent accreditation is there to verify our institutional educational merit. Next slide. And so, what purpose does it serve? Well, it really is that quality assurance, and it looks at all aspects. It looks at the instruction that we provide, our student services, our college operations, and importantly, it looks at that wherever, i.e. the location, and however, the modality in which those are delivered. And so, this is particularly prescient for our dual enrollment students and for our more far-flung, small, what we would call twigs rather than branches, of our institution. Wherever and however we're providing instruction, or student services, or operating a college, we have to do that in a way that is equitable for all students regardless of where they are. And then, of course, for public accountability, and most specifically for our federal aid to students, our accreditation is the key to allowing us to accept that aid and provide that to our students, and just to make sure that we're meeting the minimum standards. What is it that our communities expect of us, and how well are we doing? Next slide. So the question, of course, is, so why does this matter? Or, as we would say as individuals, what's in it for me? Or, in this case, what's in it for Maricopa? Well, there are some real intrinsic motivators. As I mentioned, our financial aid for students is critically important to the health of our institution, and certainly to access to students, which is a huge part of our mission. It allows our college credits to transfer to other regionally accredited, and we'll get into what kinds of accreditation there are. But our college credits will transfer easily to other accredited institutions, such as our state universities, where we send so many students. And then, of course, it allows us to access federal grants for institutions, whether that's through the National Science Foundation or any of the other large agencies. Without our accreditation, we would not have access to those funds. And then, we have some intrinsic motivators, those things that are just for us. Number one, we want to assure quality. We want to make sure that we are delivering our instruction, our student services, and everything else we do for our students and our communities at the highest level that we possibly can. And accreditation helps us do the self-assessment, self-assessment, to know that that's something that we're delivering. And then, of course, we want to ensure that we remain a sustainable employer, and as we know, a huge contributor to our regional economy. We can't do that. We can't keep our doors open if we're not delivering quality, and accreditation helps us ensure that we do. Next slide. As a board member, you need to understand that there are three kinds of accreditation in higher education. There's regional accreditation, there's national accreditation, there's programmatic. Now, we are regionally accredited by the Higher Learning Commission. As you can see on the map, it is the largest of the accrediting bodies. It covers the Midwest and what we would consider part of the Southwest and the Northeast. There are six, however, across the United States, as you can see listed here. Then there is the national accreditation. Now, national accreditation is generally sought by institutions that just aren't able to achieve regional accreditation. Typically, these are those that don't have on-the-ground academic footprint, i.e. they're online only, or they focus on career or religious education, something that's not eligible to go into Higher Learning Commission or other regional accrediting bodies. All nationally accredited colleges and universities, and this is true whether they're operating as a for-profit or a nonprofit model, are privately owned. That's very uncommon for regionally accredited institutions. So you'll see smaller private universities that are accredited through HLC, but smaller two-year and particularly technical programs, religious programs are typically through the national accreditation. And the reason that's important, even though we are not nationally accredited, but regionally accredited, is because that can impact whether or not we get programmatic accreditation. And we have a lot of programs within the institutions throughout the colleges that are accredited. You think of, say, the nursing program has its own accreditation. We have several of those, and those have an impact on our curriculum updates. So when, as a board member, you're looking at our curriculum, which is a statutory responsibility for you as a board member, when you look at our curriculum and you think, well, we should really change this, or we should really make this different, we definitely want to hear that from you, but we need you to understand that if there is a programmatic accreditation related to that program, it is going to be highly regulated by the accrediting body, and may take more time, or may not be possible to make a particular change. So those are the types of accreditation that we have, and I hope that there's an understanding of why it's important for the board to be aware of accreditation and how important it is to our institution. Next slide. And with that, we want to get into, how does accreditation really work? Yes, ma'am?
I'm just going to ask if you wanted questions around accreditation, but please continue. I apologize for interrupting.
No, you're fine. Let's get through just the how it works, and then we will definitely open it up.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, with how does accreditation work, we're going to focus down on just HLC and the standards that they set for us. And here, I'm going to ask Stephanie Hopple to step in and take us through these slides.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Dr. Fisher, and good afternoon, everyone. I'm Stephanie Hopple. As she noted, I'm District Director for Compliance Reporting and Accreditation Support. It's a joy to be here to go with our theme song today. I will be referring to the Higher Learning Commission as HLC, and you may hear that as we move forward. And tonight, we'll be focusing on regional accreditation with HLC. And HLC sets a series of criteria to reflect best practices in education, and we utilize, they utilize peer evaluators, and we'll get into more detail about that, what that is. They also have a set of assumed practices. So assumed practices are processes that every college that is part of HLC must meet in order to join and be accredited. And they focus on integrity, including ethical and responsible conduct, teaching and learning, and resources planning and institutional effectiveness. So some examples of this are conflicts of interest, or that we have proof that the board approves the annual budget, for example. Next slide, please. Assumed practices are supported by five criteria. Of the five that are on the screen there, the main focus of the institution, of institutional boards are the mission, so criterion one, two, integrity and ethical and responsible conduct, and then, five, institutional effectiveness, resource, and planning. And that's mostly because criterions three and four, as they show, will be handled by our faculty. Next slide, please. Accreditation finds a couple of roads to accreditation. So there's the standard pathway, and there's the open pathway. An open pathway is what Maricopa is a part of. And what that includes, you can go to the next slide, we'll show some more details there. So the tenure cycle for open pathway includes regular monitoring, which includes assurance reviews, which are smaller reports, and those are every four years, a quality initiative that colleges take on, and those are developed in years five through seven and reviewed in year nine. And then, there's a comprehensive visit at the end of the tenure cycle. Colleges at Maricopa that are up next for the tenure cycle include Estrella Mountain and Glendale. Quality initiatives tend to be initiatives that a lot of times, they focus on assessment. So they're little, they are stretch goals that HLC sets up for colleges to be able to allow colleges to think in a more worldwide. Next slide, please. As we talked with peer review, peers are a group of professionals that are in, that are in education, and it could be faculty, it could be staff, and the peer reviewers will, they will review all of the materials that are submitted. They have been carefully trained by HLC to make sure that there's consistency, no matter who your reviewer is. And we have 128 peer reviewers that participate in HLC accreditation work here at Maricopa. Next slide, please. On the screen, you can see the comprehensive visit schedule. Again, it stretches out over a 10-year period, and these are tentative for an academic year. The specific date is scheduled approximately one year out. Next slide, please. All right, the reason we're all here. The board has a very important role in accreditation and is the main leadership related to accreditation. Develop and adopt a mission, which everyone is familiar with. Develop, review, and make, inform decisions, and observe board policy, so make sure we're doing what we say we are going to do. Delegating day-to-day management of the institution to the administration. That includes review of the chancellor. Communicate with stakeholders as one board, so we have a common voice, we're speaking the same language, and submitting the shared information to all of our stakeholders, and in shared, engage in shared governance. And we will discuss that much more deeply as we move further in the presentation. Thank you, Dr. Fisher. I'll turn it back to you.
Next slide. Before we move on to governance, we wanted to open it up for questions. If you have questions about accreditation and your role in it as our board members.
Board members, I know this is a lot, so, you know, we have time for a few questions as we move, before I move on. And is there someone who's speaking up that I talked over? I apologize.
Marie, I'm finally on. This is Susan. So I do have a quick question, and that is, and I may have missed it in the initial lead-up, how frequently does accreditation review happen?
Dr. Fisher, would you like to reiterate that, please?
Sure. Can we go back in the slides to the one that has all the logos, please? There you go. As you'll see here, these are the next comprehensive visit schedules, so you can see that they're on a rolling schedule. For our new board members, I should mention that each college is individually accredited while it's systemically dependent. And what that means is they have their own assurance arguments that they have to put in, and they also have their own site visits. Most recently was Gateway Community College, and then, the next one, of course, will be South Mountain Community College. So you can see, it just sort of rotates through on a tenure cycle. So the first four years are used to create that assurance argument that Stephanie mentioned. It's about a 50-page, online-only document that links out to lots of different documents within the institution, particularly data sources, so that the evaluators can take a look at that institution sort of as a desk audit from afar. And then, at the tenure cycle, that we have the team come in actually on the ground and do the evaluation there, meet with faculty, staff, administrators, see the campuses. It's a time for them to sort of touch and feel and make sure that we really are doing the things that we say we're doing in our assurance argument. And there's another portion in there, the six, the six years between the four-year assurance argument and the site visit, those are used to do a quality project. And what's interesting about being in the open pathway is this quality project is a new concept. If you ever went through accreditation with an institution under sort of the old model, where you had lots of committees, and you wrote a 500-page document that was a book about your institution, that's not the way that the open pathway works. It's a smaller 50-page, very tightly written, here's who we are and what we do. And then, we get to do a quality project, and it's really exciting, because the institution comes up with the project, gets it approved, and then can do anything that they think is going to improve any part of the criteria for their institution. And they don't have to succeed, which really encourages institutions to take risks within that six-year period, to do something different and try really hard. And as long as the reviewers can see that you've made an honest concerted effort to improve, that's all that it is. So it's not really, you're not getting a grade, if you would. It's a pass/fail, and most institutions pass it with line colors, and a lot of them have improved over the years by getting into the open pathway and being able to have the flexibility to do the things they care about. So, Ms. Sullivan, that was a much longer answer than the short, how often? It's a 10-year cycle, but within that 10 years, we have those other touchpoints.
Yes, I would like to add, however, for our new board members' learning, that though each individual college is evaluated on the cycle noted, the board is part of each accreditation review. So each, though each college is accredited, we do not have single accreditation for the district as a whole. However, when evaluating, for example, the most recent two years, Gateway and South Mountain, the board also is part of those evaluations and reviews. And so, though, again, that's more part of the systemic piece tied to each college, which gives us an important role and to play as we deal with and understand the role of accreditation in our district.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sullivan. Of course, that's, that is absolutely the case. As a board member, you are, you are of a board that is for our entire district, but the way that HLC looks at it, because those are individually accredited, you are the board for each individual college as well. And so, that's, and that can be a double-edged sword, because when the board's functioning highly, that's an easy checkmark for these colleges. All of the criteria that Stephanie mentioned get taken care of for all 10 colleges, and that's great. However, when there's a challenge with that, then we end up with additional visits from our accrediting body, as Gateway has coming up in the not-too-distant future, off the last review that they had. And that's not, that doesn't have anything to do really with what Gateway had done in their visit or in their assurance argument. It had to do with how our district is operating, but the individual accreditation is on the table with the district activities around the board.
Board members, go ahead.
I think, this is Linda Thor. This is Linda Thor. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, for introducing the importance of the board role in accreditation, and Dr. Fisher for talking about the visit to Gateway. I think, and I don't know whether it's appropriate now or after the presentation on shared governance, but I do think that the new board members need to be aware that the board was a focus area for the Gateway visit. And perhaps, Dr. Fisher can remind us that there are some specific follow-up items that the board is responsible to complete by, and submit by December of this year, so as to satisfy our accreditation requirement.
We can, I'm not clear how the timing on the remainder of the learning works. Can we come back to that at the end after we've gone through all of the aspects, because some of the issues are tied to those other items? Is that all right with everyone, or do you feel it's more appropriate?
I had a question before, Dr.
Excuse me?
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes, Ms. Win.
It's, I just had a quick question about peer review of Dr. Fisher. Can I ask it now, or do you want me to wait till the end? And I'm happy with whatever your answer is.
We were finishing the comment on the accreditation piece, and then let's come back to that. Dr. Fisher, do you want to take this topic up at the end after we've gone through both issues of shared governance and academic freedom, or do you want to answer the question around this particular item that Dr. Thor mentioned now?
Ms. Sullivan, let's go ahead and take the item or the question on peer review, and then we'll move through the other two topics, and then we can talk about what's going on with the Gateway review, because all the other two topics really inform that as well. Ms. Win?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Fisher, when, how often are peer reviews done, and are they prompted by anything? If there's, or are they automatic? And if someone gets a positive, negative, how does that affect our accreditation? So if we have a professor that's doing great, I'm assuming that's all good, and we don't call that into question. But if we have someone who, through their peer review, does not perform well, or has maybe some measures to correct, how does that affect the courses and the accreditation of those courses? Is that clear?
Yes. So the peer review that, yes, of course, the peer review that happens through the Higher Learning Commission is peers of the college, so it's those folks that work at other institutions, be they faculty, staff, administrators. And as Stephanie mentioned, we're really proud to have 128 on faculty and staff here at the district. Those peer reviewers go in teams, depending on the size of the institution, from three to five or six. I've seen a team as big as seven or eight in the past, to go and do the on-the-ground review. What they're really looking at in the review is the institution itself and how it's aligning with the criteria. They They, they don't get into the assumed practices, practices necessarily at that time. Unless there's something glaring that really, that, that rises to their attention, so. That's the peer review for the institution, I think, Ms. Lynn, what you're. Speaking to is really what we call administrative review. And that's done locally within colleges with administrators reviewing the faculty members. That's managed through the, currently the residential faculty. Policies and will be in the new faculty report, faculty document that's coming. For this board to approve at some time in the not-too-distant future. And so that's managed within our district and the. The outcome of that administrative review can be multiple, one of which, and I think this is what you're, you're getting to. Is that there could be some faculty discipline, and we have a process that's documented for faculty discipline as well. The.
And not so.
Go ahead. I was just gonna say, the. The accreditation of individual courses or programs is not tied directly to the administrative review of individual faculty members. Of course, if there's a problem with a course, then the vice president of academics, the dean, the chair would get engaged with that course. And see what needs to happen for students to make sure that their learning outcomes are met before they move on to whatever is their next step within their program.
And that's really where my concern is, it's not about, and I appreciate you bringing up the other, but it's about. Key programs that we have where we have like waiting lists for students to come into those programs, and are we maintaining. Our teaching standards and our academic standards in those programs, because if we are not, that could have. Far-reaching, not just the one professor, but could have far-reaching to the whole entire program and accreditation, and so that's where that, that question was coming from, and I, I appreciate your answer.
Well, and you're absolutely correct, and that's, that's something that we look at regularly and are very concerned about is maintaining that quality. And whether that's because HLC comes to take a look at us, is that extrinsic sort of motivation? Or the intrinsic, because I think everybody that's here, faculty, staffing, administrators are about the quality of our education and, and how we're changing the lives of our students. And so with that, I think we'll move forward, if we could go on to the next topic. I was like, yes, we'll back up a little bit. There we go. So the next topic that we're going to talk about is shared governance. I'm going to invite faculty member Eddie Jenna to join us for this and get us started.
Great, thank you, Dr. Fisher. Hello, everyone. The, the topic that we face at the moment is shared governance, we thought for reference, we would give you. Both the HLC criterion that addresses shared governance. And for reference, point you to the proposed faculty agreement where shared governance also resides. So shared governance at the institution engages its internal constituencies, including its governing board, administration, faculty, staff, and students. Through planning, policies, and procedures. That's just sort of a framework for our, for our discussion. Next slide, please. As a teacher, I'm very much not used to someone else doing my slides, but I'll get used to it. As a matter of historical background, I really want to emphasize that this is historical. Not necessarily contemporary. But as a matter of history, shared governance was primarily a faculty-driven endeavor. And it worked not in isolation, but with other institutional academic values, including academic freedom and peer review. So, next slide, please, I'd like to. To briefly talk about those first two values, not because that's the focus of this topic. But because to fully understand shared governance, you would need, at least need a working understanding of the other two values. So, academic freedom. This is a vast topic, and I'm giving you a very short and sweet definition. Academic freedom is the freedom to pursue the scholarly profession according to the standards of that profession. So inherent in academic freedom is this notion of professional standards that are, that are maintained. Through peers, so that's why peer review is also an important subcomponent. Academic freedom really refers to, for faculty, refers to four different kinds of freedoms. We'll find out in the latter academic freedom presentation that there are more varieties of academic freedom than just academic freedom for faculty. But for the faculty, there are four standard freedoms recognized. Both in professional standards and in the courts. The first is the freedom of research and publication. This is probably the freedom most of us are most familiar with. A professor can research and write on topics of their choosing. Both within their professional disciplinary area and also speaking more broadly as a public intellectual. So no censorship may be provided by the institution or by their superiors. Freedom in the classroom is probably also familiar. This is the freedom to teach according to the disciplinary and professional standards of that faculty's discipline. So this is not freedom to teach however you want, but we'll talk more about this again when we get to the academic freedom presentation proper. Third is freedom of intramural speech, which is speech about, the intra implies within, so it's speech about the institution. It's a speech about, you know, the, the policies we're considering, the proposals that are being made. How the institution is being run. And then freedom of extramural speech is speech extra outside the institution. You know, if you want, if someone wrote an op-ed or did something online, that would be extramural speech. So that's the quick working definition, there'll be much more to dive into shortly. But again, for peer review, the last inner locking value. Peer review is the regulation of professional standards by members of that profession. We referred to it earlier with regard to HLC, peer review is really a fundamental value to the academy. If you're not, if you're more familiar with other professions, peer review is very common in law, accounting, medicine. All, all the learned professions tend to operate from a peer review mentality in terms of maintaining professional standards. Next slide, please. Okay, so a couple of text-heavy slides, sorry about this. But it seemed best to start off with some sort of broad definition of shared governance. Colleges and universities are unique organizations with the special purpose of creating and sharing knowledge in a democratic society. Given their special purpose, a collaborative form of decision-making, shared governance. Exists in varying forms at many, but not all, public and nonprofit institutions. Shared governance, as the name suggests, is a system in which trustees, administrators, faculty, staff, and to some extent, students. Participate in making significant decisions pertaining to how institutions operate. It stems from the belief that given their roles within the institution. Faculty and staff have important expertise and perspective essential to the decision-making process. Next slide, please. So, one thing we found is that shared governance is often confused with a distinct. Not, not to say not important, but a distinct. Set of concepts and values known as workplace democracy. So workplace democracy is different than shared governance, it has a different foundation. It is not inherently academic in the same way that shared governance historically has academic roots. But nonetheless, it's something that we deal with, and it's something that has value. Wanted to provide clarity about what shared governance is and where it comes from and what's not. Workplace democracy is thought to be grounded in values like human dignity, organizational efficiency. And justice, things like due process, for instance. Shared governance, while it might look like workplace democracy in practice, is really not about those values. It is about disseminating knowledge. In the community college context, in the higher, in the broader higher ed context, it would be that the creation, sort of like research agendas. And dissemination, which is the teaching. Of knowledge, as well as the values of academic freedom and peer review, next slide, please. In practice, there's not that much of a reason. To disambiguate these two concepts, in daily practice, when we invite people to participate. In the development of recommendations for policy, for example. There's not a great reason to sit around and, you know, figure out, tease out, well, are we doing this because it's a workplace democracy thing? Are we doing this because it's a shared governance thing? Because the practices end up looking quite similar. So my, my general contention is, when we, when we focus, I mean, these two values set of concepts exist. But when we focus on collaboration, bringing everybody together. It's not that important to distinguish, you know, the why we're doing it, we just kind of call the overall approach. Shared governance, which is, which is varying from the purely historical faculty-driven approach. Next slide, please. So there are three major organs of employee voice currently in the Maricopa Community College system. There's the Faculty Association that represents residential faculty. There's the Adjunct Faculty Association that represents adjunct faculty. And there is the interim employee senate that represents the staff. These, these organizations are typically the folks that you go to. To get representation from those constituencies to serve on various councils and committees and whatnot. That are part of, you know, the life, the doing of shared governance. Next slide, please. This, this slide is taken from a very important article written in the mid to early 1900s. In a public affairs journal. About the ladder of citizen involvement in governance. And it has been adapted and adopted to higher ed. Especially in a book that's about 20 years old called Improving Shared Governance. And this ladder is just adopted or is just reproduced from that work. I'm going to take a minute to walk through this with you. And I'm, and I'm happy to take questions on this slide and not to have you hold them in case you're just eager to throw out some questions. Because there's a little bit of detail here, and I think questions could get lost if you hang on to them for too long. So the, the general idea here is that shared governance isn't just one level of involvement. The idea here is that it's like a trombone, you know, that there are certain, you go all the way out, and at certain times, certain levels of involvement are important. And at other times, depending on the context and the type of decision, a different level of involvement may be important. But as you can tell from the, from the labeling of these steps, the first two steps of this ladder, one and two. Are considered in the participation literature not to be appropriate. And you can sort of tell that also by the pejorative naming, which, which is the naming from the literature. Level one is manipulation. And if someone is trying to invite with their deeming participation through manipulation. Then I think we all probably have a sense of what that means, that's not a genuine engagement with people to try to get their ideas and input. And creative contributions, but rather it's trying to maneuver people to provide you with an outcome that you already have in mind. That's a, that's a demoralizing approach, it's not an approach that we, we support. But, but it is something that happens, but the literature makes clear, people do that, but let's not call that legitimate participation. Therapy is an approach wherein the person who is trying to make the ultimate decision. Listens to people in the sense that, you know, they want to let people get it out of their system. So to speak, but not because they're genuinely taking that input and, and reasoning into account in a good faith manner. But if it makes people feel better and the box therefore is checked. That's just therapy, and that's not, that's not legitimate participation either. Now, in steps three, four, and five, all of this can be appropriate in the right sort of situation. There are certain kinds of decisions where they're very important decisions, but they can't be ones that necessarily involve all the constituencies. Certain kinds of HR decisions, for instance, may be that way. And if that's the case, it's entirely appropriate for employees who still need to know what decision was made, need to be informed. And so that might be all that shared governance allows, is clear communication about a decision. In other cases, consultation might be more important. And in consultation, you are making a good faith effort to truly. Listen to, understand, engage with the arguments and the data with regard to any particular decision. Ultimately making clear at the outset. I'm retaining the right to make this decision myself. But I really could only make a good decision with all of your help and input and guidance. That can be appropriate in the right sort of situation. Placation, as you can also probably tell by its name, not an ideal form of shared governance. But nonetheless, it's something that empirically you see quite often. Placation is, we're going to try to keep people from being involved. And that, that boxing out of, of constituencies gets them upset. It causes them to, you know, express their displeasure in ways that make it, you know, a pain for you, basically. Not to, not to just sort of give in. And that's no way for things to operate. Placation is far, far from ideal, but it does happen. And that happens when we really ought to be operating at level six, which is partnership. But for, for reasons too many to mention, it, that partnership is not working. Six, partnership, I would submit, is the ideal. It is the default, not everything ultimately has to be done in partnership, but to maintain the partnership spirit. When things can't be done that way, at least an offer of justification should be provided. One of the things to remember about partnership is it is not simply. A temporary partnership, it's not a fly-by-night partnership, we are all an institution, we care about deeply. And many of us intend to spend our entire careers here. And a partnership has value beyond any individual or immediate decision that we're facing. So sometimes in a, in a true partnership, the value of the partnership outweighs any one particular decision, and people who really believe in the partnership. Will keep that in mind. That really does make for a lot of stability and a lot better working environment and a more productive and successful institution. A couple of quick examples of seven and eight, seven and eight are not all that common. But they, but they do exist, so one example of delegated power. Not at the governing board level, but all the rest of the, of the hiring that gets done like by committees in an institution to hire a faculty member or a manager. That, that is an exercise of delegated power, because in theory, the college president, if we're talking about colleges. The college president is actually delegating her, his authority to the committee, not to make the ultimate decision. But the college president doesn't sit in on all these interviews and question scoring and all that kind of thing. And with good reason, because the college president needs to delegate and trust. That there are others who have perspectives that are going to help make better decisions than any one person could make on her, his own. So that's an example of delegated power, and then there are very few examples of employee control. But, you know, the HLC criteria help make clear where those areas lie, and that's almost exclusively about the faculty. In terms of curricular judgment and pedagogical judgment. So that's a big slide, a lot of information, I'm happy to pause here if anyone has questions about the slide or anything prior.
Any other comments before we move to questions by board members?
I, I, Sullivan, I do have more on shared governance, just to be clear, I just wanted to pause like at the midway.
No, I appreciate that, I know that adds a lot to. No, I appreciate that. I know that looks a lot to digest. You don't hear any comments, so let's move forward. Thanks, Mr. Jenna.
Thank you. So now I'm onto the next slide, please. So to sum it up, shared governance is a system of distributed decision-making that's prevalent in most of higher education. Its particular implementation will look different according to an institution's particular history, mission, context, and leadership. The nature and purpose of shared governance is sometimes confused because of a lack of clarity about two important things, the role of authority and employee voice. And we're going to address those two in the next couple of slides. Next slide, please. Thank you. Authority. This is, this is sometimes a challenge because shared governance rests on a principle of deference to and respect for group expertise. This principle of deference has been recognized, for instance, in the administrative regulatory realm by the U.S. Supreme Court. There is a famous case, um, that were one of the parties with Chevron. And this is referred to as Chevron deference in the literature. It's the notion that when a complex matter comes before the court that's technical in nature, highly scientific, there's a high degree of expertise that a lawyer, again, the judge was a lawyer, judges are lawyers, that a lawyer has no expectation to be really fully capable of understanding, they will defer to experts. And so this principle of deference exists in shared governance as well. The board has and will always retain its legal authority as determined by statute. There's no question about it. But there is a question of judgment with regard to how the board exercises legal authority. If it's engaging with shared governance, then it ought to be willing to engage the principle of deference and respect expert authority, true expert authority that comes from training and experience, and take that into account and give it its due weight. So in the curriculum process, for instance, you all are given quite a lot of curriculum to approve, uh, modify, approve modifications of our new curriculum on a regular basis, but no one, no one can know what's appropriate for all of these different disciplines. Literally, no one person can know that. So you're in a position of having to defer to expert authority and understanding if the system works correctly, these experts ought to be giving you recommendations for curriculum that you should be willing to accept without having that expert authority yourself. So shared governance then, you know, is justified by this belief that the ultimate decision makers, those with the legal authority, are most likely to make wise decisions by relying not on their own judgment, but rather on others' expert authority. That's what is met by the principle of deference. Next slide, please. The other area that is often difficult to wrap your head around is like, why do we engage people so much? Why is participation at this level and to this extent so important? Well, there are a few reasons. One, traditionally colleges and universities are democratic institutions, wherein employees' input and perspectives are thought to be important sources of institutional knowledge as well as signs of respect. And in a traditional higher ed environment, you've got, you know, lots of disparate voices who, uh, who are, you know, implicated into a, a culture of criticism and participation and dissent. And these democratic values are what the institutions try to instill in their students to be active and effective participants in our democracy. So it's not any great surprise that these educational values often also translate directly to the employees who are working with our students day in and day out, faculty, but staff as well. Very good. Next slide, please. I'm almost, I'm almost going to give you a breather here. This is the last slide on shared governance. Shared governance is about deliberation, robust deliberation, and intentional inclusion of diverse perspectives. And, and it's also about propensity to seek consensus wherever possible. And that means it's not a top-down process and that decisions often do take longer. But there's much to be said for going slow in order to go fast. Because, uh, you know, another, another way of putting this is shared governance really adheres to the model of measure twice, cut once. If we, if we just go, go, go without the proper inclusion and deliberation, often we find that organizations that do that will end up with decisions that lack support. And when the support's not there, it's very difficult for those decisions to turn out to be successful. So you may have a good sense of what you'd like to do, but taking the time to build the consensus is actually an investment in the success of the decision. And shared governance just recognizes that on the front end. But, but it's fully, but it's, but it's absolutely true that it does take longer. And that's not necessarily thought to be a defect, it's actually a feature. That is my last slide on shared governance. I guess if there are any other questions about shared governance, now, now would be a good time before we start on academic freedom.
Yes, so board members, uh, speak up if you have a question. I'm not calling it a particular order, so if there's clarification or other piece, please feel comfortable asking to speak.
Mrs. Sullivan, this is Stephen.
Yes, Dr. Gonzalez.
I know you posed a question to governing board members and I suppose, given them, maybe give them a few more seconds to think of a question. I'd like to make a statement on shared governance. As someone who's been on, on, I would say, both sides of a shared governance process, having been a faculty member in a past life and now today serving in a position that is at, at the, at the top of a very large organization, I've benefited from implementing, uh, shared governance. And as Professor Jenna said, um, it requires patience. The other thing that is at the core of shared governance is trust. Because those that are charged with, uh, some of the authority, whether it, you know, specifically the legal authority, as Eddie has described, some of, some in this shared governance process are held in this process. And that's where I see that trust comes in. And so to say that we have shared governance or to say that we want to be an organization that has implemented your governance, isn't something that just happens by edict. It, it takes, um, it takes the entire organization to buy into it. It has to be demonstrated by the whole organization. Ultimately, people are responsible in positions for the decisions that are made. But I found, um, great value in having that in, that decision to be informed as greatly as possible, particularly by those, um, that are impacted by the decisions and by those that have expertise in areas that can really inform the decision. I just wanted to share that from my own personal and professional experience.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Again, I know we have more ground to cover, but, uh, board members, again, do you have a question? Because this is probably one of the links that that we really need to appreciate, particularly in line of accreditation and, uh, other aspects of our decision-making. Any comments? Okay, I don't hear any at this time, so whomever is on to the next topic, please move forward.
For better or worse, you get to listen to me for a while longer.
Sounds like a good one. Okay, go for it.
Good, exploring academic freedom and responsibility. Next slide, please. Colleges, I, I mentioned earlier the four freedoms of faculty members, but it turns out that the courts also recognize that colleges and universities have academic freedom rights as well. In the HLC literature, this is often referred to as institutional autonomy. But you'll also see it referred to as institutional academic freedom. The four freedoms are that colleges and universities are to determine for themselves on academic grounds, who may teach, what may be taught, how it shall be taught, and who may be admitted to study. Now, all of this is to say, not that colleges and universities operate without shared governance. Shared governance, remember, is intertwined with academic freedom and peer review. What this means is that external forces, legislators, uh, outside organizations that are organizing to impact the directions of colleges and universities, these kinds of entities can have influence because they're constituents. But those decisions ultimately need to be made on academic grounds by the colleges and universities themselves. Next slide, please. Oh, could you go back a slide? I'm sorry, I forgot to say one other thing. On that last freedom, who may be admitted to study, the community colleges are open access institutions. So as a general matter, this is not something that, uh, we address normally. But institutions that do have limited admissions, that have maybe, you know, grade point average cutoffs or test score cutoffs, that matters. Also, uh, those institutions, uh, that don't have open admissions often have affirmative action programs for admissions. And it's that fourth bullet that allows colleges and universities to do that, though it's a much more complex constitutional matter that I'm going to totally bypass here today. Okay, next slide, please. Uh, you'll just recall the working definition of peer review. That's the regulation of professional standards by members of that profession. In addition, here's a working definition of shared governance after I gave you all those slides. And that is sharing with and delegating authority to the faculty appropriate to their academic and professional training and responsibility. Let me emphasize for a moment here, the only reason this is a faculty centered definition is because the topic of academic freedom is, happens to be a topic that is about faculty. Shared governance is about everyone, but academic freedom really only belongs to the institution, the faculty, and the students. So for that reason, that shared governance definition is written the way it is. Next slide, please. So this is the same definition as earlier. It comes from a book, uh, For the Common Good, Principles of American Academic Freedom. It is, it is a book that is part history, uh, part, it's not really a book about the law. It's about the principles and where they come from, from a academic values perspective. Robert Post is a former dean at the Yale Law School. Matthew Finken teaches at University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign College of Law. There's also an Article Three of the Faculty Agreement that is proposed, a section on academic freedom. That is essentially the section that's been in the RFP in years prior. And for our new board members, the RFP is not a request for proposals, although it is also that in our unique vocabulary, the RFP used to stand for, or still stands for until June 30th, the Residential Faculty Policies. So the language in the proposed Article Three is almost identical to what was in the RFP, except for the addition, I think, of one sentence about the new academic, a committee on academic freedom. Next slide, please. This is from Professor Post. "The function of academic freedom is not to liberate individual professors from all forms of institutional regulation, but to ensure that faculty within the university are free to engage in the professionally competent forms of inquiry and teaching that are necessary for the realization of the social purposes of the university." Now, often you'll see references to just the university, community colleges are relatively recent additions to the higher ed landscape, historically speaking. And so many of the things you'll read just talk about universities and not necessarily colleges or community colleges, but it really is applicable across, across the board. Next slide, please. So the freedoms of students, uh, students have certain kinds of academic freedom as well. These are, are less well-understood, they are less well-defined, but they all exist to some extent. And sometimes intention with other freedoms. So that's why this isn't, isn't that easy. And you can't just look all this up in a book and know exactly what to do. The first freedom of students is the freedom to learn in a non-hostile environment. So a, a learning environment has to be one where students are not feeling targeted. That's not the same as discrimination. They should also be free of discrimination, but it, but it's, it's different than discrimination because hostility may not be based on any protected classification under discrimination law. To be taught without indoctrination or proselytizing. Classrooms are not places where indoctrination or proselytizing can ever occur. Three, the right or the freedom to free discussion. Students should not be prohibited from discussing their viewpoints to the extent that they are relevant to the pedagogical goals of the class session. The extent, uh, to the extent similarly, students should be able to inquire freely. And finally, they should be able to express themselves in ways, um, that are congruent with their values and beliefs. Next slide, please. So AACNU is the American Association of Colleges and Universities. It is the national organization that represents academic, or higher ed administration, basically presidents, chief executives, chancellors. And the Academic Freedom and Educational Responsibility is a report that they put out. This slide and the next are like just a couple of quotes from that report. Academic freedom is necessary, not just so faculty members can conduct their individual research and teach their own courses, but so they, so they can enable students through whole college programs of study to acquire the learning they need to contribute to society. Next slide, please. Faculty are responsible for establishing goals for student learning, for designing and implementing programs of general education and specialized study that intentionally cultivate the intended learning and for assessing students' achievement. These are some specific instantiations of what academic freedom gives faculty the space to do. And one of the particular reasons I think it's important to discuss AACNU's perspective is there is consensus in the academy that academic freedom is essential. There are, there are statements about academic freedom that are signed on to by a multitude of organizations of trustees of community college, I'm sorry, of college administrators and the faculty, all, all recognizing the essential nature of the academic freedom to the higher ed enterprise. Next slide, please. This slide is about our new committee and I am going to turn it over to, I was going to say Professor Matt. Professor Jolly, who is the new co-chair of the committee, who will discuss this slide.
Good evening all. My name is Matt Jolly. I'm an English faculty member at Gateway Community College and was just recently elected to co-chair the Committee for Academic Freedom along with Provost Fisher. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit about that committee, um, give you some background and talk a little bit about the work that we've done to date. The committee was, was created, the chancellor called for the creation of this committee in, on the spring of 2020. And we began our work over that summer. Our initial work was mostly sense-making. So we read together, uh, For the Common Good, the text that Professor Jenna was referencing earlier. And we examined a number of cases together and, and talked about them from the perspective of academic freedom. And uh, we examined a, a number of cases together and, and talked about them from the perspective of academic freedom. And we set to work on the creation of a charter. Uh, that charter is in its final form. Uh, and it includes the following as a statement of the committee's function. Now, we're charged with providing academic freedom, education and training, serving as a source of expertise for collegial dispute resolution and promoting a culture conducive to academic freedom and freedom of expression. Uh, the committee is comprised of um four subcommittees. They are education and training, dispute resolution, faculty discipline, and policy review and recommendation. Um, so the education and training sub, subcommittee uh plans, develops and implements appropriate education and training on academic freedom and related issues necessary for all constituents to acquire practical understanding of academic freedom rights and responsibilities. Uh, that first training is on schedule to be deployed by the end of this term. And the audience includes uh all Maricopa employees. Um, faculty and uh staff and administration alike. Uh, the second subcommittee dispute resolution, it's comprised of three uh administrators, at least one of those um, from the district and three faculty members from the Committee for Academic Freedom. And uh, and the committee may choose to call in an adjunct faculty member or a representative from one of the instructional councils as needed. Uh, you'll recall that um, the academic freedom uh really depends upon peer review, and it's important to have um, subject matter expertise when considering um issues of academic freedom. So uh, the, if there's a concern about academic freedom, that, that um confidential submission of that concern will be submitted through an online uh form at the district. And um, and it will trigger a review by the dispute resolution uh team. And uh, they'll consider the, the concern, they'll, they'll consult with um subject matter experts and uh, their recommendation could be one of three things. Um, either uh they resolve the dispute through dispute resolution. Um, they recommend the issue to administrative evaluation as it will be defined in the fact. Um, or they can choose to take no action. Um, in the event that uh, uh, an issue of academic freedom is directed to the administrative evaluation process. Um, the faculty discipline committee would be involved. And their, uh, their role is to provide due process for faculty. Um, they shall make recommendations with regard to all matters of faculty discipline compatible with the policies and procedures in the faculty agreement. And shall be provided all relevant materials necessary to make that determination. Uh, members on the faculty discipline committee are the same members on the dispute resolution committee. And finally, there's the policy review and recommendation subcommittee. Um, their job is to review um all existing and proposed policy. Um, in order to uh determine whether or not there are concerns related to academic freedom within. Uh, they've set themselves a two-year uh goal um to accomplish the review of all current um, uh, F A C T uh policies as well as administrative regulations. So that's where we stand right now as, as a committee for academic freedom. We've accomplished a great deal in a very short time. Um, and I, and I think that in large part has to do with the leadership of Provost Fisher and uh Professor Jenna. Uh, and I'm looking forward to the work that is ahead of us. So I think that that's our, is that our last slide? And if so, then I think it would be an appropriate time to open it up to questions.
I think there's one more.
Okay, thank you. Go forward and then we'll open it up.
There we go.
There it is. Okay. Uh, so board members, uh, so, so let me ask this, uh, Dr. Fisher, does this conclude your presentation this afternoon?
It does.
Okay, so with that then, um, board members, I realize there's been a lot of learning and this is to again enhance our uh understanding and round out our edges of perhaps not knowing all or enough and or just be needing to be refreshed. With that, um, I think I'll go down the list and see if we have any particular questions. And this time I'd like to start with you, Ms. Munoz.
I do not have any particular questions. Um, just kind of wanting to say thank you, though, for seeing the presentation together. It was a lot of information, um, but I do think it was very well explained. You know, I think any questions that I had throughout the presentation were answered um just throughout the rest of it. So thank you.
You're welcome. Um, I'm going to go in alphabetical order again. And Miss Bittersmith, I'm going to put you back in the Bs and start with you.
I, I received an email from Miss Bitter Smith that she was um booted from our meeting, and so I know that she has audio right now, but I don't know that she's able to participate.
I just received a question, a text from her. She said she has no questions at this time. So um, I'm sure she's digesting this and uh, as all of us are. So with that, I'm going to move on to Mrs. McGrath. Do you have any comments or questions for this afternoon? Okay, um, possibly we'll come back there. I don't see her as still connected. I mean, I do, but I, I don't. Maybe Elsa, you know, her status. Um, with that, I'm going to move to Dr. Norini.
Yeah, no, no question. There was, there was lots of, yeah, lots of information. Uh, I think it'll be helpful as we, as we move forward throughout the, the year, as examples come up to kind of see how they are couched in some of this information, uh, because it's a lot of information, and I know there's going to be a lot of nuanced uh discussion as, as we go forward. So um, but no, I really appreciate it. It was, it was really helpful and informative, and I'll look forward to, to getting the slide so I can refer back to them.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving on, Ms. Smith.
Yeah, hi. Thank you for the presentation. Per Dr. Norini's point, I think um the examples that arise will help us contextualize this information. My question is, are there any currently pending situations that would provide a specific example um that are worth bringing to our attention now? Or are there any anticipated um, situations that you would like to bring to our attention? Just to be as concrete as possible about the types of issues that we might see in the year ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Fisher, before you answer that, or, or anyone else who's on your panel for presentation. Um, I do want to say that we'll come back at the end to the issue around A L, HLC. Uh, after we go through this line of questions, and certainly um, there could be other issues. So giving that back to you, Dr. Fisher, and your team to answer.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. That's correct. We, we have information on Gateway. There's a question earlier in the presentation about their next uh check-in visit, and so we can speak to that in more detail, and that might help kind of contextualize what we've been talking about. Uh, we can delve into that now, or we can complete the round of questions and come back.
Uh, Ms., is there any other example that you can supply before we get into that discussion for Ms. Smith?
I'm, I'm thinking, I'm rolling through my colleges and, and thinking through. I don't believe that we have an outstanding issue, though. I'm going to turn this to Stephanie Hopple.
Okay.
Stephanie, are you, what other issues are you thinking besides the, the Gateway visit?
Yeah, the, the Gateway one is the main one that affects the boards, the majority of the items um, that are for follow-up with HLC at the recent colleges include related to assessment. That's, that's one of the, the bigger items that are there. So um, the gate one is, one is the only one at this time that I can think of that would affect the board, but I will look it up really quickly as we finish the questions and we'll get you confirmation on that.
Okay, we'll come back then to the HLC thing, uh, if that's all right with you, Ms. Smith, and uh.
Ms. Sullivan, did I, did I interject uh with regard to Ms. Smith's question?
Sure.
So I, I can think of a couple other things. One is currently uh the subject of litigation in federal court, and so probably not much should be said about it other than uh, the matter at, that was recently at Scottsdale Community College with regard to academic freedom of one of our instructors. Um, I presume that sometime in the year 2021, that will reach a final resolution. Um, and the other is that uh, in the recent past, there was a federal settlement uh, that resulted in the district agreeing to provide external training on academic freedom. And due to COVID, the parties agreed to extend the deadline for that. And currently, as I understand it, the deadline for that training to be done is June 30th of this year. Uh, but you know, that, that's where it stands at the moment, in any case.
Okay, I will be, we'll, we'll be following up with that. Okay, Dr. Fisher?
I would say, uh, thank you, Eddie, for bringing that one forward. So I think the question was, are there other HLC issues and the, and per Stephanie's answer, and my, my recollection, Gateways is the one that really affects the board. The uh, other issue that Eddie's talking about is really about um academic freedom. And so it certainly fits in the context of this, but I didn't want the board to think that that's an HLC issue. It will be an HLC issue uh depending on how it comes out if there is a violation with the institution, but at this point, that is not uh on their radar necessarily. Um, but we will talk more about the, the gateway issue.
Okay, I'll, again, we'll come back to that. And then for clarification from Ms. Smith, uh, the other discussion will be most likely continued in an executive session on that particular item as things evolve. Um, Ms. Smith, it, does that satisfy your question? You know?
Uh, yeah, that's fine. I, just for clarification, I, I wasn't just asking about HLC. I was also asking for the academic freedom uh examples, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I, and I understood that as well, that it's not just HLC. Um, okay, moving on then uh to Dr. Thor.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Um, I have a question for Dr. Jenna. Um, in the, I think the title was Four Freedoms of Colleges and Universities. And the third one down was something like, um, let's see, we're getting there. Right, the third bullet down, how it shall be taught. Uh, would you help us understand what that means in light of academic freedom?
Uh, yes, Dr. Thor, thank you for that question. Um, well, like I said in my earlier discussion of this slide, academic freedom does not operate in isolation. It also operates in an, in an interlocking way with the values of peer review and shared governance. So while as a technical matter, colleges have the legal authority to uh say who may teach, what may be taught, and how it shall be taught. That doesn't imply that in a shared governance system, uh, college, whether that's an administrator or a board of trustees ought to tell the internal community, the faculty, how their disciplines ought to be taught. That is best left to the, to the experts in the discipline and in the profession. What this really is saying is external constituencies, whether that be a legislator or legislature or um Congress or whatever, that they really ought to stay out of it. They really ought to leave colleges and universities as communities to determine how to best deliver content. I, I regret even saying, use that expression. Delivering content is a terrible expression. How they ought to be engaged with teaching and learning. Um, so I remember last year, or maybe it was two years ago now, when the president of the HLC came out to provide a talk um, to the board around HLC, shared governance and the like, and she told a story about her um, her serving on a congressional uh rule, it was a rulemaking committee convened by the Department of Education about, you know, hammering out regulations for a particular higher ed statute. And there were people who were pushing at the stakeholder meeting for uh, you just put in the law exactly what shared governance means, and then we'll just sort of settle it. And her response, as I recall it, and many of you were there, so please correct me if my memory is hazy. Um, I recall her response being that she told them to stay out of it. That it might well be easier to have once, one exact definition put into law, but it's not the place of Congress or the Department of Education to provide that definition. It has to be done within the confines of every college and university for themselves. So that's the autonomy piece, and that plays out even there. Does that, does that help, Dr. Thor?
Yes, thank you very much. That was very helpful. Um, and I also uh want to join with others in uh thanking the team for a, a very uh, comprehensive and uh understandable presentation.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Thor. Ms. Lynn?
Um, my question is for Dr. Jolly. Um, Dr. Jolly, we could go back to slide 37. It was the one before the last one that was for questions. So as you were describing the subcommittees, you had a lot of good information. It just wasn't um part of, uh, there was no slide for it. You stayed on the slide. And while you were explaining it, I was like, oh, I wish we had another slide for it. So do you have what you just shared with us in some kind of written format as you, you broke down the subcommittees? And I thought it was important, your descriptions of them for us as we're considering them, because this was a lot of information. And so I'd like to be able to go back and say dispute resolution committee does X, the faculty discipline, education and training, whatever those are. Do you have your ex, um, expanded comments someplace that we could see?
Yes, and in fact, um, if the presentation is emailed to you, you'll find those notes in the speaker notes um, for the PowerPoint.
Okay.
But I'm happy to put, uh, put the notes in an email as well and, and send them out.
That'd be great, and then all board members should get it. But thank you so much because I besides the fact that we have these subcommittees, their function and their purpose as it relates to academic freedom and also to um all of, of our courses and our, and how we apply that in the system is really critically important. So, uh, thank you for your time and sharing this with us tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, I will follow up with uh, with um, Carl, with Provost Fisher, and, and she can share that with all of you.
Thank you.
Um, with that, on my time, uh, at first I want to say thank you very much for the presentation. I think it's always important to be refreshed on these aspects of our work and work in partnership with um everyone. Uh, so I'm going to go back to you now, Dr. Fisher, and your team to talk about HLC, the gateway evaluation that was conducted by HLC and what's pending for us as the board in uh response to the uh comments that arose from that review and uh, gosh, it's been a year ago now plus. So with that, uh, Dr. Fisher and Dr. Gonzalez, both of you.
Thank you, Ms. Bull, Ms. Sullivan. Um, I do have the document here, and I think it would be helpful if we get that out to all of the board members. So among the things that we will be sending you as a follow-up will be the, the actual report. And I'm going to ask Stephanie to take us through what that report says and what, what the follow-ups are. Stephanie?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you. Um, so a quick summary of what is due to HLC by December 31st of 2021. And this will have to be addressed with all colleges that submit in between now and then. Is evidence, number one. We're required to send evidence of a board document that provides a definition of and expectations for shared governance. So this evening is part of that. Two, written procedure that clearly outlines a protocol for board interactions with staff, faculty, students and administrators at individual campuses and at the district. And there's a little bit of history in the document that Dr. Fisher will be sending related to Gateway. Um, that is most definitely for the read.
So as we, this is um Provost Fisher again, as, as we discussed very early in this particular presentation around HLC. The interest of the accrediting body is that our board, if you will, stays in its lane if you will, stays in its lane and that we stay in our lane. So the board has a function, the administration has a function. Certainly, faculty have a huge piece of our function. And so what HLC visiting team is going to be, or the review team is going to be looking for is that some of the items, as you'll see in the report, that the things that they were concerned about, that we've made progress on. Now, from my assessment, I think we have made great progress in some areas. Each of you can judge for yourself, and I hope that we'll have further conversation about that moving forward as we prepare for the report. We do have a team that's working on the language for that, and we'll be circling back with the different groups that need to have input on it as we move toward that December deadline. With that, I would also add something that sort of came to mind. I know we mentioned it briefly in the presentation, and that's the faculty agreement. I've heard it said that, you know, HLC wants us to have this or that. HLC wants us to be clear with our faculty and our staff about what it is that's expected of them, how we interact with them, how shared governance is supported. There's not an HLC interest in a particular document. That said, we've been under the same RFP. That would be the faculty policies since I got here in 2017 and before that even. And so that document's quite stale. We've had a team called FACT, the Faculty Administration Collaboration Team that's been working on a new document, and I believe that will be coming to the board sometime in the not-too-distant future. So again, that's how that particular document fits into this overall picture of accreditation and shared governance. We, it is a document that helps support both of those and particularly communicates to our creditors that we're paying attention to the things that they want us to pay attention to. With that, Ms. Sullivan, are there other questions or other information we can provide?
Well, I think part of the issue, so you're going to be sending the report to all board members that they haven't already received it. And at some point, board members, we will be deliberately reviewing that so we can assure that we're making progress in reacting and accommodating the comments and recommendations and guidance of HLC to address those issues and concerns. So with that, I mean, this learning and professional development is certainly a step in that direction. Also, the activity we're engaging in around our policies, which also articulate our practice and our quote-unquote lanes around rules and responsibilities. All of those are elements that will contribute to, hopefully, and I anticipate, satisfying the HLC measures and guidelines for how a board reacts and interacts and makes decisions in this arena. I want to also comment that some people raise the issue of does academic freedom, shared governance, et cetera, interfere with board leadership? And the answer is no. In fact, it contributes to our capacity as better leaders for this district. And I appreciate the learnings that you brought to our attention. And as the board members may have more questions on these issues, we will certainly look and anticipate and plan to address those. With that, you concluded your presentation. Board member, any one last question for the good of the order before we move on?
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, Mrs. McGrath.
I have a question about accreditation. Is it possible to have accreditation for the entire district? And I'd like to know how much accreditation costs and how much it would cost to have just one accreditation.
Just, I'll answer topically and then give it away to Dr. Gonzalez to answer with Dr. Fisher. And the answer is yes, single accreditation is possible. It is a process to move in that direction because currently, that's not the model by which we function in accreditation. So then, moving on, Dr. Gonzalez, Dr. Fisher, would you take on the next part of all of that, please?
Sure, President Sullivan, Mrs. McGrath. We would have to get those numbers for you. I don't have those off the top of my head. And whether we would realize any savings or not would need to be determined. But the greater question is, what problem would we be trying to solve in moving from the way that we're accredited now to independently accredited? And then we'd have to ask ourselves the question, would we want to go through that lengthy, laborious process to become singly accredited? And again, would that solve some of the issues that couldn't be solved by just working on some items that we would identify through such a process? Dr. Fisher, is there anything that you would add to that?
No, so that's exactly what I would say, and we will get the cost figures to you. I will say, as we've had conversations with our HLC liaisons and other institutions that have gone from individual accreditation or independent accreditation, it's a small differentiation. But regardless, those individual accreditations to a central accreditation, a single one, they are not seeing great cost savings in terms of the cost outlay to have accreditation. They are seeing some, and it's simply by whatever institution that you're looking at, some savings in other different ways. Centralizing or consolidating efforts around a particular service, perhaps, that sort of thing. But it's not something that you can say, we would want to move to single accreditation for cost savings. That's just not something that a board or anyone else would realize immediately.
And to add to that, certainly, that would be one of the considerations up or down on when or if we chose as a board interest to tackle that discussion and certainly interest, going back to the question, what are we trying to solve? I mean, it's very possible there are issues. But until we would generate a specific or deliberate conversation in that arena to understand the full measure of that transition and its benefits or not, it's not something that you just do. So I appreciate the inquiry, Mrs. McGrath. And certainly, that is something at some point we as a board could discuss, an interest or not to move forward, at least in exploring that as an option. Does that satisfy your question?
Yes.
So again, with that then, I want to thank all of you for this evening's attention. And always, we direct people to go out and give joy to the world. Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any closing comment before we adjourn the meeting or work session?
Well, of course, I want to say thank you for your participation, President Sullivan, and other members of the board. And I especially want to thank the team who presented this evening, who put together the presentation. And I just want to mention that there was a lot of talk about Gateway this evening. And I served as, I was serving as president at Gateway during a visit in 2019. And aside from this particular comment related to the board needing to determine, develop a definition of shared governance, the report was stellar otherwise. And so I think that's fair to say for the number of people who, you know, participated in the development of a document that HLC saw, and for everybody who participated in the visit, Gateways was to be commended for the good work that they did and their part of the reaffirmation process. So I just wanted to say that. So thank you for that opportunity.
Absolutely. So with that, everyone, again, have another nice rest of evening, a conclusion to your week. I know that, I think we have a three-day weekend coming up. Is that correct, Dr. Gonzalez?
That's correct.
Yeah, so I hope everyone appreciates and enjoys that. And then also, next Tuesday is Reminder, we have another board development work session. This time, we'll be tackling the conversations of policies. And we'll be hearing from Ms. Tomy on that with other teams in this arena. So we look forward to meeting with everyone again next Tuesday as well as doing an agenda review. So thank you, everyone, and good night.